City Attorney, is there anything you want to discuss before we go on?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. If the city council so moves, then the city council will move into closed session to discuss those items, agendize for closed session discussion. Specifically, item number one, consultation regarding public employments, Government Code section five four nine five seven, title city manager recruitment, and item number two, conference with the legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, per government code section five four nine five six point nine B. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion to move to closed session? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think that's old, it was ten years ago.
That's an ADA accessible door.
Yeah, it was seventeen when I... I was sergeant at the time. My brother was in Vietnam. Three Purple Hearts lost it, but my poor mom had her husband with a Vietnam cap on the wall. Blue tacks were where my dad was. He drew, he was an athlete, he was a breeze. And red dots were where my brother was.
So they were at the same time?
Yeah, but then some, and three times from moving, he walked up to the door and I gave him my sheet, so. On her own, so, yeah.
That's your first.
Okay, at this time, we're going to resume the meeting of November 4th, 2019. Vice Mayor Richmond will lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
It would be my honor, thank you.
Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Resendez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Here.
Mayor Velazquez?
Here.
Here.
City Manager Avra?
Here.
City Attorney Epperson?
Here.
And Police Captain Reynoso?
Here.
And the record will show Chief of Police Westrick as absent. The agenda for the City of Hollister City Council regular meeting of November 4th, 2019 was posted on the bulletin board on October 30th, 2019 at 4:50 PM per Government Code Section 549-54.2.
Thank you. City Attorney, do you want to report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report out of closed session is that the city council discussing closed session those items agendized for closed session discussion and direction was given to staff. The city council recessed from closed session at 6:57 PM.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have two proclamations, one for Key Club Week and one for National Philanthropy Day. Are those... Key Club, are they here? Key Club, come on up.
How you all doing? Come on up this way, guys. Want to come up? So, see that photographer right there? He wants your picture. There you go. Give him a big smile. Whereas Key Club International, the oldest and largest high school service organization with more than a quarter million members in 38 countries, is observing the week of November 4th through the 8th, 2019 as Key Club Week. And now, therefore, I, Ignacio Velazquez, Mayor of the City of Hollister, proclaim November 4th through the 8th, 2019 as Key Club Week in the City of Hollister and call upon our officials and all citizens to congratulate members of this organization on their 29th anniversary and their achievements and make themselves aware of Key Club, whose members are preparing themselves to be better, responsible citizens as they provide service to our community. Thank you very much to all of you. This is for you. And please, tell us a little about yourselves.
So, hello, everyone. My name is Yvette Robledo, and I'm the president of Key Club. So, what we do is we do community service and volunteer work throughout the City of Hollister. In the past, we've helped with the Veterans Day dinner, or I'm sorry, lunch, trick-or-treat streets, and any, and almost all events. So, thank you all for letting us help out. Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Now, National Philanthropy Day. We get to see each other every year.
At least once.
Philanthropy is obviously very important to all communities. I wanted to tell a little story about Elvis Presley. I'm a, I'm a big Elvis fan and traveled to his, his house in, in Memphis. And one of the stories I was told out there was that Elvis gave a lot of money to different groups, and nobody knew he was doing it. Here's a man that really believed in his community, his country. And on top of that, I don't know if you know this, he would not write off those donations either. Now, there's a man that really understood what it meant, and I appreciate all of those that actually do give back to our community and want to make sure everyone understands how important it is for our community. Now, therefore, I, Ignacio Velazquez, Mayor of the City of Hollister, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim November 14th, 2019 to be National Philanthropy Day in the City of Hollister, and urge everyone to recognize the tradition of American philanthropy as it continues to improve and enhance the lives of all by promoting the common good. So, thank you very much, Gary.
Well, I think the city council knows that the National Philanthropy Day is truly a national event, and it's normally on the 14th or 15th of November every year. For the last 17 years, we've celebrated here in San Bernardino County, and on behalf of the 155 nonprofits who serve our community, I want to thank the city council, because all of you are very philanthropic. You give back to the community, not just with your time, with your talents, but you're also very generous in many other ways. Speaking of your story, I'll just share a small little story today. I had this lady call up the Community Foundation. I do not know who she is. She gave me her first name, and she left a message and asked me to call her back. So, I called her back, and she just shared with me in a very nice way. It's just her and her son, who is quite sick in the community. She was born and raised here, and she is setting up her estate, and she wants to give everything back that she has to her community. You know, that's it. And that happens a lot. There's a lot of incredible donors, just like you talked about Elvis, anonymous donors who want to make our community better. So, again, on behalf of our nonprofits, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to the consent agenda. Are there any items the council would like to pull? Do we have any from the public?
I have no, nothing from the public.
Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, the motions are second?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, public input. This is a time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. George Lewis?
Good evening. I'm George Lewis. I'm representing your neighbor, the Hollister United Methodist Church. We are celebrating 150 years this year of organization, and as part of that, we are starting a historic church capital campaign to bring the church back to its original beauty and distinction within the city of downtown. This, we wish to preserve and enhance the integrity and beauty of this historic building for the continued use of the church and the community meeting place. We hope to involve the community as a whole in this project to preserve this unique part of our downtown. As part of that, we have already refurbished the brick on the outside of the building. Our next goal is to preserve the interior by repairing some roof. The third item is to expose the beautiful stained glass windows, which are truly unique, hand-painted windows that were done in 1910 when the building sanctuary was constructed. Those have been covered with Lexan for the last 40 years. That Lexan has fogged. You cannot see the beauty from the outside of the church. So, we're going to replace that with a new protective covering, both to protect it from the weather and to protect from vandalism. Some of these windows are probably irreplaceable because the artwork cannot be duplicated. Also, the third, the fourth item is that we are going to maintain our only pipe organ in San Bernardino County, which was constructed 72 years ago with donations from the community. And it is truly, it is good working condition, but the manufacturer is still in existence. It comes down and services it every year and says we're going to have to spend some significant money in order to keep that organ working in its beautiful case. So, I'd like to ask you, you have, I think, on your desk, one of these. If you can, I'd love to have your participation. You can mail it to the church, or you give it to me. Give me a call, I can, I'll come and get it if you want it, but thank you. Thank you, Carol.
Let me be the first.
She beat ya.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve Becerra?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Hope everyone's having a great evening. My name is Steve Becerra, Hollister resident. I'm just here to talk to you about something that occurred early October 2018. And what happened during that, one of your council meetings, a four to vote, zero vote, you voted to suspend the downtown, the signed ordinance for downtown district. And as you know, I have a business downtown, in downtown district, and last week I went to, came to the city hall to talk about a sign that I thought was probably not allowed based on the ordinance. And I discovered from your dedicated workers at the building planning division that the sign ordinance has been, is still suspended, and you were work, we were working, we were going to be working on redeveloping the ordinance and maybe altering it in some way. So, what I'm here tonight to do is just maybe breathe some life back in that, in that detail. I know that the planning department and the building department are hardworking but understaffed, and I know they have a lot of things going on, but I just wanted to bring it back to your attention, and hopefully we could take a second look at that and get that done. I'd, I really like that to happen before the downtown district becomes the Wild West of signs. It may be really difficult that that happens to, to, to turn those things around once the sign ordinance is actually back in place. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Carson Klauer?
Good evening, council and members of the public. I'm just here today to extend a thank you to City Manager Avra for his decades of service to the city, his dedication to the community and the city's employees. I also want to just reiterate that I appreciate all his help for when I was on the council with my goals and initiatives. It's very difficult to get anything done as an elected official without a good manager. I think that Billy's rapport with the city staff and the working environment that he created was exemplary, and in my eyes, you're a solid city manager, a good dude, and a great friend. Thank you. Thank you.
Zavon Casada?
I got giggles, sorry, success giggles, because I know I'm gonna say something positive about my community. Cause I'm, my name is Zavon and I'm a member of this community, this brilliant, innovative, go-getter, you know, champion community that I'm part of. And it just came to my sense that, you know, I just wanna know, like, how many actually woke up this morning and said something important about themselves and said that they were a superstar? Or how about more of like a mega superstar? Or gave themselves that affirmation to keep them going to a forward extent of where they're moving in emotion of being brilliant, showing their innovative thinking and coming together as a community? You know, there's things that are around this community that, you know, would be kinda cool, like the cannery. I mean, right now the cannery doesn't look too cool, right? I mean, they kinda passed inspections and all that, but I think the cannery would be a cool destination. I don't know how many have been to New York, but the meatpacking industry. I think the cannery would be a cool place to turn into a place of eateries, boutiques, and a place of nightlife. I really believe that. The spaces that we have now in Hollister that are getting consumed by track homes, which they are, is not really showing our brilliance. It's not giving our innovative thinking of how we can bring together what our community stands for. I mean, it's just coming from my mind as a, as a champion myself. And it just, it just occurs to me that, you know, my community, you know, Mrs. Lenore, having the whole community lit up downtown, it looks so much cooler now. It gives me a sense of comfort and a sense of pride to be part of this community. And there's other communities that, you know, we have to watch for because they're kinda like moving up a little bit, like Los Baños and Gilroy. And getting in the demographic that we would probably be wanting, like a demographic that are go-getters and homeowners as well as people that are starting businesses. I feel that if Hollister keeps going the way we're going and not doing the destinations that we're, you know, we should do, like make more parks, bigger parks actually, and not saying that anything's wrong about us now. It's just, I really feel that, and believe, actually I believe. And I seen a woman have a sign, believe, right? Believe women. You know, believing is the main key to open any door in your life. It actually doesn't open, it carries you and then it opens it and then it carries you through it. And your belief is everything. And I believe in my community, you know? Rather my community believes in me or not, I believe in my community. I see, I'm around it. I'm around homeowners, I'm around people that are go-getters, you know? I love that word, and game changers. And I see it in the youth. The Key Club, so brilliant, is carrying on a generation and still now. And doing things of their logos, awesome too. It's like our high school's like so like forward. It's absolutely, it's awesome. And I come up here not to like speak about like bad things and, you know, Mayor, like I know I like always like, you know, all shook up and the Elvis thing and I was thinking, oh, maybe he's gonna donate something to like the art of the city, but it's cool. But, you know, I like, I like that, that one thing is that when I see youth here, I, I really know that the youth is like really trying to thrive to go forward. And, and it lets me know that my youth that is in this community is actually awesome and brilliant and go-getters and stars and everything above. And it's really good to be able to express that in a format like this, in a way where I can have people looking at me instead of standing in some parking lot by myself, right? And it's just, it's just awesome. And I'd like to thank you again, Mrs. Lenore, because you're awesome. And, you know, you're, yeah, I just had to say that real quick.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're gonna move to item D1, City Manager's report.
I have nothing to report this evening. However, if I may go first on the next, on D2, I just wanna let the council know that I wanna personally thank the folks that went down to the MBAA with us this last couple of weeks in Las Vegas. We had a great convention down there. We probably, thanks to Mike Chambliss specifically, we were able to pull probably as many individuals into our location that we have the previous, probably five or six years. We had a really, really good turnout. We never know how the leads come out, but I wanna just make sure that I thank Mike for all his hard work and Cheryl and the Leonardo's and, and Julie was there. There's so, we had a lot of people, Ken Lindsay? Huh? Oh, I'm sorry, National Business Aviation Association. So. And that's it for me.
In addition to MBAA, I had two staff members attend the LCW Employment Workshop in Watsonville last week, I think it was. And then I have several employees in Class A driver training currently, so.
Do we have any others? Brett, fire? You're good? Okay, well, City Council has one. So I'm gonna ask Bill to come up. On behalf of the City Council, we're gonna present this plaque to Bill for all the work he's done in our city. Bill, amazingly, November thirteenth, nineteen ninety-five, started in our city. You know, I remember when I first met Bill, I think it was the late nineties. I think we're quite a bit younger back then. We'd run around town trying to get things done. Now I think, at least I limp around town. I don't know. Bill still rides a skateboard through town, so he's, he's probably still good. You know, Bill, we had a lot of time together over the years, both as a business owner and here on the council. And I wanted to thank you personally for all your hard work. And I know sometimes I've probably been the person you at least wanted to see, but there's been, sometimes, I know there's one or two where you were excited, excited to see me as I was you. And I wanted to personally thank you for your service and all your guidance through some of the many, many crazy times we've had here and your vision. And on behalf of the City Council, I'm sure they're gonna all want to thank you also, but I really do personally want to thank you for all your hard work over all these years. Enjoy, enjoy your retirement and make sure you live it to its fullest. And there's standing ovation. It's important to know, this is Bill's last meeting, so it's, it's very important. And I don't mean that in a bad way. I really do appreciate everything, so I wanted to say thank you again.
Thank you.
Sir?
Can I say something now?
No.
Now, I, first, yeah, thank you very much to this council. Thank you to the thirty-seven other council members that I worked with throughout the years. I don't know if George left. George did a huge favor for me at one point by didn't, by not promoting me. So, but again, thank you to this community. Really, the first, I think the first probably week or so we were here, I was a temporary employee for a year. So my daughter was born in nineteen ninety-five and one of the things that I will remember more than anything is people that I didn't even really know yet in the city of Hollister sent flowers and whatnot to the hospital for the birth of my child. So I knew right then, this was a, this was gonna be home and you guys have been nothing but awesome to me the whole time. So thank you very much. I've been very fortunate to have you.
Carol?
Well, I think everybody knows how fond I am. You want me to go?
Absolutely.
Uh, Bill, Avra, you know, we, we worked together and then I worked for him and then he worked for me. You know what? This guy's exceptional. He was an innovative thinker and, and he comes from beautiful parents. That's why he's the way he is. He gave a lot to this community, but I gotta tell you, he really loved the youth. You were tops for him. He was good on the youth. Of course, I'm very happy for him, but very sad that he's not gonna be here with me. But I think I'll be able to still call him and I'm hoping he doesn't mind while I work the rest of my term out till the end of next year that sometimes I might call on him for the history lesson. But you and your family are beautiful people. God bless you guys. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Spencer?
These last ten months have been an honor. No pun intended. I've known Billy's wife long before I ever met Billy. Julie, I still don't know what the... No. It, it, working with Billy has, it has been a great pleasure. I get a lot of advice from him and I'm hoping that once he leaves, he doesn't delete my number out of his phone. Of course, I know where he lives. But Billy, you're gonna, you're gonna be missed. And I wanna thank you for everything you've done for me and for welcoming me into this family. You'll be missed.
Mr. Richmond?
Thank you. Bill, it took, it took me a while to go through all my papers, but you still owe me these thirty-seven reports here. Bill is the epitome of a good city manager. And not because he's a great manager, but because what he cared about most were the people in the city. That's what counts, more than anything else. He cared for the staff, he cared for the, the employees, all the way down from top to bottom. And he cared for the council members. And when I, when my wife had to go to the hospital on emergency, it was Bill who got in his truck to show me the way home. So he's a wonderful guy. We're gonna miss him. When I first came here and started writing stories about the city and the city manager, I wondered why they had a hippie for a city manager. But as he grew older, he grew out of that. And I just want you to remember that while you slept, Bill took care of the now forty thousand people here, no matter what time of day it was, no matter what day of the week it was, and no matter what week of the year it was. Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Resendez?
Billy, you've spent your entire life in public service. You should be very proud. Your family should be very proud. I think it's a very honorable thing to do. It's been a pleasure to work with you in these last months of your career. I think that you have a wealth of knowledge that you're taking with you that we're all gonna miss up here. Yeah, but enjoy retirement because you worked really hard for it. You deserve it. So good luck to you in everything that you do. Thank you.
Well, there you have it, Bill. You got your standing ovation. A lot of praise from all of us. Well deserved. So thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go and move to item E1. City clerk?
Yes. This is the second reading of Ordinance eleven eighty-four, which is going to add chapter two point one eight to, for electronic filing, to Title Two of the Administration and Personnel of the Hollister Municipal Code relating to electronic filing of campaign statements and statements of economic interest. This is to accommodate, January first, twenty thirteen, Assembly Bill two four five two went into effect, adding government code section eight four six one five, which allows a local government agency to mandate online or electronic filing for an elected officer, candidate, committee, or other person who is required to file statements, reports, or other documents under the Political Reform Act, so long as the filer receives contributions or makes expenditures totaling one thousand dollars or more in a calendar year. The law prescribes criteria that must be satisfied by local government agencies to require online or electronic filing of statements, reports, or other documents. Those are all listed in the ordinance and I won't go into them all now because it is several pages, but this is just the second reading to add chapter two point one eight to the Hollister Municipal Code, which is in regards to mandating electronic filing of campaign statements and then statements of economic interest.
Any questions from council? No, this time. Did you have a question?
No.
This time, we're gonna open for a public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
This time, we're gonna close public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt ordinance number eleven eighty-four.
The motion, is there a second? Second. Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and take a ten-minute break. I know there's students here that need their signatures, so we'll take a break and you guys can come get those signed off. So you can go home and do your homework.
Hi, darling. There you go, babe. You're welcome. Huh? I'll take care of you. You know I'll take care of you guys. I'm so glad you guys are here. Thank you for coming. Come back again. When you get older, you'll be up there sitting. They want Billy. Yeah, they want Billy. They want Billy. Last one. God, he's gonna be happy. When I retired, I was so happy. I can retire in the year twenty ninety. Hey, I started young, man. So did I, but it's still twenty ninety when I can retire. Don't quit that job, Caroline. Don't quit that job. Don't you quit that job.
All right, this time, we're gonna resume the meeting. We're gonna move to item F1. Uh, this is for the appointment of Mr. Paul Eckert as city manager. Do we have any comments first from?
We do.
Council members, or from the public? We'll have Mr. Eckert speak first, I believe?
Sure.
Yeah.
Greetings, Mayor, and members of the City Council, and members of the public and city staff. It's a pleasure to be here.
We're not gonna do a PowerPoint.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Ms.
Yeah, you probably did everyone a favor not having to go through a PowerPoint, but I do wanna just introduce myself. I first wanna acknowledge the warm welcome that I've received, genuinely. Over a dozen people have reached out to me and introduced themselves and wished me the best of luck. Both employees, business members, some veterans. I know that tonight is a very important item, and I just wanna underscore, it's an extraordinary privilege to be considered, either for a permanent or interim position here. I know there's awfully big shoes to follow, and that's gonna take a Herculean effort to follow in Bill's footsteps. A little bit about me, from a personal standpoint. Grew up in the Bay Area. I grew up in a military family, career Navy. My dad is interned at Arlington. I was in the United States Marines. I was a sergeant. Put myself through college after the Marine Corps. My first city that I started in was Foster City, a very progressive, wonderful community to start in. On a personal note, we have three adult children. Lauren, a strong, very capable young woman for the young people in the room. She was a merit scholar. She went to the University of Notre Dame, and now she's working on her PhD at the University of Victoria. Our middle son, Ben, was born right here in Gilroy while we worked, while I worked at the city of Morgan Hill. And our youngest son, Reed, was born in Iowa. Reed is a really special young man. He's a stage-four brain cancer survivor, and he's doing quite well now. He's a second year at the University of Victoria, where he followed his sister. Professionally, I think most important are my years of service as a city manager. Overall, I have thirty-two years of career service. Twenty-six of those years were in communities of thirty thousand or more, and sixteen of those years were in cities, was in a city of eighty-two thousand population. For context, I've worked both in medium-sized, small, and in large community. I'm very intrigued, and I believe I have good alignment with the city of Hollister as a result of all that career experience, particularly in cities that were mid-sized and large. A lot of stats I can throw out, but I've had the chance to lead organizations that were either two or five times larger in many respects, budget, infrastructure, et cetera. One thing, I really did my homework in this process, briefly on the process. The council conducted a very thorough selection process. You had public discussions on the selection firm. You narrowed down on a, one of the best selection firms, CPS. You conducted interviews. Your consultant did pre-screening, including background checks of your finalists, recommended finalists to you. You conducted interviews. And I was so proud and felt so privileged to be considered as unanimously as one of your top choices, or your top choice. I believe, again, my alignment is very strong with your needs, particularly working with city councils. I've worked with councils that had very divergent viewpoints and perspectives, and I was successful working along with our staff team in bringing the council together, and bringing the community together, and the staff together, and accomplishing great things. I'm very strategic plan-oriented, and I believe that working with the council, we can develop a strategic plan, we can bring all of our resources together, and we can build on the great work that's been achieved in the recent years. So, again, just wanted to introduce myself. Thank you. I do, if I can, take a moment, and I do wanna address some of the concerns. I provided the city council with reference checks, and every one of those, I should say letters of reference, and every one of those, can I get a?
I see Billy runs around on a skateboard.[1023.12][1023.12](laughter) Billy uses a skateboard, so.[1028.12][1028.12](laughter)
Yeah, I'm a runner, he's a skateboarder. He's more cool than me, on many fronts, I'm sure. But the letters of reference all are united in underscoring my character, my professionalism. They're from people who really matter, the mayor, council members, department directors, male, female. They all speak to my character, my ability to lead, the atmosphere that I create, the work environment that I create for our employees. People thrive, people, and I'm just about to wrap up, but people can thrive and do well. I do wanna touch on one area of concern. I can take thirty seconds and break down. In two thousand and thirteen, a retaliation claim was filed against the city. I worked in Iowa and me. It had to do with something that happened in two thousand and four. In two thousand and four, concerns were expressed about me and a few council members. A board was assembled, and a very thorough evaluation was conducted. The leader of that board was the mayor, who was a very successful hospital administrator. She conducted a very thorough investigation, including investigation of all females that I worked with and that council members worked with. It concluded that there was no inappropriate behavior. Ultimately, however, nine years later, retaliation claim was raised. The retaliation claim asserted that someone's employment was affected. What's important to note is I had no idea who that person was. That person was three or four people down in the organization supervisors. It was an organization of seven hundred and fifty employees and eleven hundred bodies. I nor most others were aware of who that was. Ultimately, what became problematic for the city was that that report could not be found, and that there were so many different people involved, that they couldn't identify or describe the process that was utilized nine years before when looking at it. And when the council looked at the number of depositions, the dozens of people that were going to be engaged in the legal case, the council decided to, to settle the claim. I can tell you that the council were very supportive of me. They did not want to see me leave. I didn't leave for that reason. We came back to California to care for our mothers, my wife and mine. Her mother lived with us in Mount Shasta. I wanna underscore that in Mount Shasta, there was a very, very, very comprehensive process. They interviewed twenty people from Sioux City to verify my character and my performance. I was successful in Mount Shasta. I moved to Gridley. Likewise, Gridley, similar to you, used to headhunter, consultant. They conducted an investigation, including all past employment, identified all concerns. It was two inches thick, and they concluded as well that it was not an issue specific to my character. I've been highly successful, again, in each of the communities, and I just wanna conclude by, again, talking about the future and whether permanent or interim, I would be honored to serve the city council, the city staff, and the community. I appreciate everyone's passion and appropriate concern. Again, I want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert.[1280.14][1280.14](applause) Okay, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For item F1, resolution number twenty nineteen two thirty-seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister authorizing an employment agreement with Paul Eckert for city manager services. I have three speaker cards. The first one's Cheryl Von Booth.
Mayor, I'll just ask that maybe you don't adhere to the three-minute length, since we didn't current right now.
Okay. Fair. Go ahead.
Hello. So, I was gonna start with something else, but I wanna start with something really quick, based on what Mr. Eckert said. He has no knowledge of who this woman was that made these allegations. However, according to the Sioux City newspaper, their reporting said that in two thousand, when Mr. Paul Eckert, then the assistant Sioux City manager, found out about Ms. Brittany Scott's impending divorce, he called her in, had a conversation with her about it, and blah, blah, blah. But he claimed he doesn't know her, but he was concerned about her divorce. Just throwing that out there, Sioux City newspaper. So, I wanna start with, I believe the women in Sioux City, and I believe them when they say that they were sexually harassed by Mr. Paul Eckert. What I don't believe is that the city council wouldn't believe women when they say that they've been sexually harassed. Paul Eckert, he was accused of creating a sexually hostile work environment by multiple women, but yet, nobody wants to believe that, and he now claims he doesn't even know her. Instead, everybody wants to believe the man who cost the taxpayers of Sioux City, Iowa one point three million dollars due to his predatory behavior. And to address your comment, Mr. Mayor, misogynistic statement on, if I thought this guy was a predator or garbage, he would not be the top candidate. Mr. Mayor, city governments do not pay out one point three million dollars of taxpayer money because someone told an off-color joke at work. Every single job that I have held, there has been a Paul Eckert. And I'm sure everybody in this room that has worked, has worked at least once with a Paul Eckert, and some might even actually be a Paul Eckert. So, I don't understand why it's so incredibly hard to believe women when they say that Paul Eckert has harassed them. We've all lived it, we've all seen it. I'm not saying that he shouldn't have a job. I'm not saying he shouldn't be able to make money, pay for his house, pay for food. What I'm saying is he shouldn't be able to have a job that requires the same authority that he has already proven to have abused. If I sexually harassed somebody at work, I would have my nursing license taken away. I could wait tables, I could drive the beer cart at the golf course, which would be amazing, and apparently, I could even work for the city of Hollister, but I wouldn't be able to still be a nurse if I sexually harassed somebody. Mr. Paul Eckert should not be in a position where he has authority over women. He just shouldn't. And if the council votes for him to be our new city manager, they are sending the message to every woman that works for the city of Hollister, every woman that lives in Hollister, that you do not believe women. Just believe women. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1541.21][1541.21](applause)
Elias Salinas?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Paul Eckert's name did not become public until Wednesday of this week, and apparently, the mayor was out introducing him as this new city mayor last Saturday, Saturday before the Wednesday of. And I thought it wasn't supposed to be released. I've been waiting for this man's name to be released for two and a half weeks, I believe, is when someone had said that they decided that there was gonna be coming forward. I didn't find out until Wednesday, when the public found out, and did my, started doing my research on Thursday, and I just, I wish I had had more time, because I don't think I've done enough research on this. There's more to be done. He came up here just a few minutes ago, and he said that there was a hiring process that had gone through, that there was public discussions about the hiring process. I am very involved in what happens in here, and I do not recall any public discussions about the hiring process for Mr. Eckert at all. If I miss something, please tell me when I'm done. He claims that the Shasta and that the city of Gridley all did their research. Well, the city council of Grizzly claims, they stated, that they did, they were not aware of the settlement. So, if they had done their background, they would've known about it. So, why does he stand up here before you and allows me to question his veracity when it's been out in the public that a city council did not know about it, and they hired him without the knowledge? Okay? I have a problem with his veracity, because he stands up here and he said that he did know, because there were so many hundreds of people as his employees. He knows. There are emails, there's evidence out there, and I don't have that access, because I did not have enough time to grab that eighty-page complaint. The statutes may have run, and they did not go against him, because the statute ran, but there's written evidence out there that he sent emails to this woman, and multiple women are victims of his. He reminds me of Pepe Le Pew, a totally unpolitically correct cartoon now, where that character continues to pester and pester this female when she tells him no. No is no, and that's enough, but he continued, and it was for years. It wasn't just a one-time thing or a couple of times. It happened for years. This man has a pattern, and that is why I have said on public media that he is a predator. I do not believe that a person with this character should be coming to the city of Hollister hired as the city manager, especially taking the position of a man who has done so well for the city, and we're losing it, unfortunately, the man is leaving. It is just beyond me why he would put out there on his LinkedIn, trying to say more things about himself that are not true. So, he's out here coming forward in the public and saying things that are not true, so it's his veracity's in question. He stated that there was a full background check. It is my understanding that there was not a background check. It was a submission from the headhunter company to submit, to give you, the council, the opportunity that there was something there. What was there? What did you guys know? What did you not know? But it was the headhunter's company that did it? They're gonna get paid. They have a reason to give you the information or to not give you specific information, because they're gonna get paid if you hire this man. This is not what Hollister needs. This is not what Hollister wants. He claims that there were dozens of people within the city, whether it's staff and whether it's business people, that have come forward to him and are welcoming him, and I can tell you that there have been- you that there have been more than that, that have been contacting me since Thursday of last week, whether it's staff members within the city and city people and business people here who have contacted me and telling me that this is not a good for the city of Hollister. Please do not consider offering this man the contract. You put yourselves in a liability, and there's one thing that is said in the legal field, Jason could back me up, if you knew that something could happen, you knew or should have known, and you do not want to place yourself in that liability.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. You know, I don't know, Mr. Eckert, you know, I just read about the stuff on social media, did some research, found some articles as well, and I find it very disturbing that we're even considering hiring this gentleman. This isn't 1919, this isn't 1960, this isn't 1970. We're in 2019, and for us to dismiss a woman's claim because it wasn't a criminal charge, criminal investigation, I think that is very disrespectful to not only women, but people, I mean, all people. You know, if you accept this person to be our next leader, you know, and I'm not sure if everybody in the community understands how much power the city manager of Hollister has. You know, I know you guys all like to think you hold some power, but you really don't. City council and the mayor really aren't the ones that are the ones that make the decisions and do the hiring and firing of our city heads, city leaders. It's the city manager. City manager has a lot of influence. And to create a potential work environment for not just women, but all staff, I think that is irresponsible of you guys as our representatives and leaders. We need someone who can pass a background check, a good and thorough background check that's pretty squeaky clean. To have something like this of this magnitude is very concerning. You know, again, you know, you could say it's, he was in the past, maybe he's changed. You know, supposedly, he didn't know this individual, but I also read articles where he did know this individual. So it questions, I don't know him personally, but it questions his integrity, his morals, his ethics. Having somebody with questionable morals and ethics and leadership, it's not what the city of Hollister and the citizens deserve, nor do the staff members, current and future, deserve. To even put somebody in that position who had that kind of past, it's ridiculous. It'd be very shameful if you guys do elect him as the next city manager. You know, you don't need to have a daughter, you don't need to have a wife, to understand that this kind of stuff happens all the time. And yes, the city did settle the lawsuit. You could say, you know, you could take the position, well, the city didn't want to spend more than what they were gonna spend, so they just wanted to settle. And maybe the gentleman was innocent, the city just wanted to get rid of this. But what if the victim, after maybe having to deal with a lot of pressure, having their name, maybe they just didn't want to deal with it any longer. And maybe she was a true victim and just said, you know what, I just want it to be done and over with, I'll accept the settlement. Now, civil lawsuits are completely different than criminal lawsuits. You know, you know, O.J. Simpson, criminal, he got off. The civil lawsuit, he was found guilty. So I'm not here to say that Mr. Eckert's guilty, but you shouldn't completely dismiss the settlement as, well, there was nothing there and the city just wanted to settle. Because if they had a solid case that this sexual harassment did not occur, I guarantee you, they would not have settled. But since, I'm sure that they, through their investigations, found some sort of evidence that probably corroborated the claim, you know what, it's probably best that they did settle, that way it won't cost them more money than it already did. I hope you guys take the community's opinion at heart. And again, I don't know this gentleman, but why not start over again? Who cares if it costs us a little bit more money? You know, Mr. Mayor, you know, you like to use this catchphrase all the time, and let's see if you really mean it. You always say, let's take a step back and let's do things right. Well, I challenge you, why don't you take a step back and let's do things right? And if you really care about this community, and if you really believe in that statement that you use a lot, especially on items that you disagree with, get it done and let's do this right. Because I know I, even though I'm not a female, I would not want this gentleman leading my city knowing his past. Because just because it hasn't happened recently, there may be things out there that could have occurred or can occur in the future. So, we want to do things right, let's take a step back, and if it takes us a little bit longer and having, have to have an interim manager until we find somebody, or maybe we can coax Billy into being the interim manager, which I'm not sure that'll happen, but hey, it's wishful thinking. Let's just get it done right. And again, it's nothing against this gentleman, I just, when I look at the totality of the situation, it really disturbs me and bothers me that we can have somebody like him leading our city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Any more speakers? Okay, any comments or questions from council? No, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
You all know me. I have a very, I have a very high bar you have to meet before I say anyone's guilty of anything. And I, you've seen me do this. I'm not inventing that for this speech. And I'm happy to say that some of you, a handful of you, supported me when I got up at that dais and said, you're gonna accuse somebody, I want to see the evidence. You were happy to support me at that time. When somebody accused our employees of selling their, selling themselves for money. Second time I did it was when somebody came around and accused our two female members of selling their vote for dinner and a glass of wine. You guys remember that?
Yeah.
Where were the rest of you when I stood up and said, you can't say those kind of things? Except for one or two of you, and I thank you. I thank you, Elliot Salinas. So you know what my, and I apply the same standard to everybody. Because I've seen what happened, what newspapers can say that have no relevance to the truth. I've been on that side. I even know what people who are on the city council can say that have no relevance to the truth. And once it's out there, you go ahead, try and get it back. I think it was Mark Twain that said, well, I can travel around the world before the truth can get out of bed. And that's the truth. And especially if it's something that is inflammatory. It doesn't mean I was there, I wasn't there. I don't know what happened.
But you believe him, but not the witness.
I did not say that. I said I was not there. I do not know what happened. But I do know what my standards.
No.
I do not know what happened.
Neither do you.
Please.
I didn't interrupt you guys. Don't interrupt me.
Works both ways.
You know what my standards are, because I've showed them to you when other things were involved. And my standards are very high. And I've read recently, somebody posted, oh, you're innocent unless proven guilty, but that doesn't count, only counts in court. Well, maybe I grew up old-fashioned, that's not the way I look at it. This doesn't only count in court, it counts in life. And that's the way I see it. I'm not closing my mind to more information. I'm willing to get more information. I'm always willing to get more information. Because I'm not afraid of the truth, whatever the truth is. However, I don't think everything that's on the internet is the truth. I'm sure some people do. I don't think that everything that's in the newspaper is the truth, because I've seen what the newspaper does to people. And the same thing goes for any other kind of media. So it's very easy to accuse somebody of something, and it's very hard to take that accusation back if it turns out to be wrong. That's my personal experience. And I'm sorry, I cannot change my personal experience with your personal experience. I'm telling you, I'm minus. So, I'm not saying I'm hook, line, and sinker. If I vote to hire Mr. Eckert, I'll be the first one in line to vote to fire Mr. Eckert if he doesn't live up to our standards. And it only takes three of us to let him go. So I'm going to make the motion that we change this resolution to hire Mr. Eckert as the interim city manager, pending a study of additional documentation by the city council.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Aye.
Four of one.
Two.
Four of one, go.
She's on you.
To offer him the interim.
You have to change the.
The.
Okay. Here, we're gonna move to item F2.
My name is Socorro Sandejas, I am an assistant engineer with the city of Hollister. This item is for city council approval of the stop warrant analysis for the report for the intersection of Nash Street and Powell Street, as well as for the authorization to implement the report recommendations. Currently, the intersection is a T-intersection with the stop sign on Powell Street and non-along Nash Street, or Nash Road, sorry. The intersection was evaluated for the purpose of installing a multi-way stop sign, multi-way stop control, in an effort to enhance pedestrian safety. As a result, the study, as a result of the study, it was determined that a multi-way stop at this intersection was not warranted. However, the report does recommend that a marked crosswalk be installed at the east leg of the intersection. In addition to the marked crosswalk, advanced warning signs and painted yellow warning legends leading up to the crosswalk are required. Additionally, the report recommends that curb bulbouts be installed in order to improve pedestrian visibility for drivers. Staff has reviewed the report and recommend that city council approve the report and authorize implementation of the report recommendations. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Richman?
I'm sorry, I was paying attention, but I kind of missed it. Did you say it would be a lighted crosswalk, it would have the blinking lights?
No. Sure.
What's gonna happen at the crosswalk is that there will be some bulbouts to reduce the size of the crosswalk, so the children are, the roadway at a shorter amount of time.
Do you think it would be appropriate, what's your opinion about these lights that are buried in the?
On lighted crosswalk, I think that we were recommending that we have the signs that have the.
Oh, okay, you'll have the signs instead.
Yeah, there'll be an illuminated sign.
Oh, okay.
And then there'll be legends on the ground.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Just wanted to tell you guys, you've been on a roll. Some great stuff has been coming up lately on these crosswalks, and I really appreciate how hard and how fast you guys have been working to get all of these projects done. So, really is, it's nice to be seen.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lenore?
Can you bring me some of those bulbouts on Saponito's? We're just gonna try it out there, and we're gonna see how good they are?
We're working on it.
Come on, man, I want those.
There's the sign.
Thank you, man.
Do we have any speaker cards?
We have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion?
I make, oh, go ahead. I make a motion that we accept resolution 2019-238, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hollister approving the report for the all-way stop control warrant analysis for the intersection of Nash Road and Powell Street and authorize implementation of the report recommendations.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, 5-0. Move to item F3.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, you have an item before you, a resolution for the supplemental appropriation of $23,000 for a wireless antenna. As you know, the city council previously approved a six-repeater digital network for the city. We're working on that. One of the locations that was designated as one of, for the repeater to be installed was at the desalinization plan on the corner of Fairview Road and Sunny Slope. When IT staff, EVS, which is the contractor, and Sunny Slope Water District employees toward that location, we couldn't find a suitable place to install that system there. There wasn't enough access for maintenance and enough room to put that device in there. We did locate a different location, it's further, further away, but it's actually at a higher elevation, so it would work even better. But what, the wireless antenna that we have to connect into the network for the city wasn't strong enough to make that link. And therefore, we're looking at anywhere from $17,000 to $23,000. IT staff has looked at the cost of a stronger wireless antenna to make that connection, and it would require that much for us to go ahead and make that purchase and make that final link to connect the six repeater into the network. And therefore, what you have before you is the supplemental appropriation asking for $23,000 into the current fiscal budget from reserves for your consideration.
Okay, is there any questions on this item?
I have a comment.
You can't have 90% of a, of a communication system. You gotta have 100%, or you don't have a communication system. So I'm gonna support this request.
Thank you.
So just clear, this is all part of the project we're doing, but you have to move the location, it's costing more, stronger antenna.
We had the antenna that we thought, and it wasn't part of the original budget, because we thought we could use that same antenna. Turns out, it's not strong enough, so we need a replacement antenna.
Will we be able to use that antenna anywhere else to help you guys?
Yes. There's other places that the city can still use that existing piece of equipment.
Okay. All right.
I move that we, oh, I'm sorry.
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Richman?
Please, my apology. I move we approve resolution 2019-239, resolution city council, city of Hollister, authorizing the appointment, appropriation of $23,000 from reserves for the purchase and installation of a replacement wireless antenna for the digital repeater project.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Move to item F4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it pleases, the council staff is respectfully requesting that we continue this item to the November 18th date. There was a small, we recognize that there is a small change in the scope of services that we'd like to take a look at. In addition, I'm sure you got the supplemental appropriation as part of the packet, however, we neglected to put it actually in the resolution, so we were gonna have to come back and fix that anyway. So, we just thought it would be easier to make both corrections. We'll bring it back to you on November 18th for your approval. This should not interrupt any of the SNPUS activities between now and then, anyway, so we should be good.
So you need a motion to.
May I ask that we withdraw it and then just put it on whenever? It's just easier for.
Oh, sure, Christine, what is ever easiest for you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's easier, yeah.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments, council? Is there any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move that we withdraw ordinance number 2019-240.
Second.
Resolution?
Yeah. Resolution.
Is the motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move over to reports from city councils, members regarding their committees. Councilmember Lenore?
I, I have, I have nothing to report
Okay.
from the last meeting.
Okay, Councilmember Spencer?
Nothing to report from the last meeting.
Vice Mayor Richmond?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Sendez?
Nothing to report.
And I have nothing to report either, look at that.
We didn't do nothing.
We just might set a record here tonight. Yeah, we're gonna move to item G two, informational reports. Councilmember Lenore?
Uh, informational reports. Well, let's see, I do wanna make a comment. I hope you're all enjoying the downtown lighting. And I hope you don't put anything else on my trees. Their trees are off limits now. I don't wanna see nothing, don't put any duct tape on there, or clear tape, or staples, and, no. And if you do, you're gonna get the bill. Okay? Mike's gonna do something with maybe a little area for notification, uh, but the trees are off limits now. Those lights were, were forty thousand dollars and I don't want it messed up. So, if you could please not post stuff on the trees, pass it along to the high school. The red ale.
Moi?
You know? So, I just wanted to get on record as, please, please don't post over those lights. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Spencer?
Wow, I feel like I have some power. Nothing at the high school, though. The trees have got me. Oh, let's see, what have I done? Treat Streets. Amazing, Tina, oh my god. Oh, my god, I had so much fun. I never wanted to go home, but I got cold, so I had to go home. I also did, I also helped out with the downtown cleanup with the HDA. There was people that actually saw me on my hands and knees digging in the trees. Doesn't see that very often. And that's about all I've done. I've been kinda letting low these last few weeks.
Okay. Vice Mayor Richmond?
Thank you. Just that I've been getting some requests for information, more and more information about the, about the road, roads. And the last bunch I got was asking when the deceleration acceleration lanes at Z best would go in. So, that is currently in the EIR process at Santa Clara County, of course, and they're moving on with that. And also, there is a restriction in place on when most of the traffic can go in and out of Z best on the top of Highway twenty-five, you know where I'm talking about. Came up recently, someone mentioned that the, the fatality accident that was there, even though it's in Santa Clara County, was caused by the fact that that morning there was a lot of tulip fog, which is this fog that lays right over the top of the, of the greenery. You can see it early in the morning, especially these days when it's warm in the evening or cold, very cold overnight. And then that tulip fog starts coming up and you can't see anything. And so I, I did talk to COG about seeing, about putting in some of these yellow light, lighting things that kinda pierce the fog a little bit, so you can see it. Now, God willing, Highway twenty-five will get finished someday and that whole, that whole problem will go away, but until then, we're, we're gonna really have an issue there because of all the trucks going in and out. Again, that's in Santa Clara County. We don't have any direct control over it, but we have indirect, indirect access to what's going on there through the VTA and, and the mobility partnership in which the mayor is, is, is our representative, so. Uh, we're working on it. Just watch out for the trucks and ninety-four percent of the serious accidents are driver error. That's ninety-four percent, whether the road's good, bad, or the weather's good or bad. You really wanna get out alive, drive carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sendez?
Sure. On, um, October twenty-second, I attended the school board meeting. Just, I, I said I was there as a community member, as a parent, just to express my support for the redistricting of the school board members. That way, we can have actual people that live within those communities representing those schools. Uh, I'm so down with that, I'm so excited that they're doing that, so I just wanted to go and express my support for that. I also attended the Treat Streets with my little girl, Tina. Phenomenal job, just like last year. It was, um, well-attended. And it was a good time had by all, so thank you and your staff for that. And then last but not least, I guess a couple of things. Mr. Basara brought up the, the signed ad hoc committee. That was a good point. I know we were so close to meeting a resolution, to getting a resolution on that, or to bringing one back, so can we check with Amber and see where we're at with that? Um, so we can wrap that up. And thank you, Mr. Basara, for, for reminding us of that. And then last but not least, I had already talked to you about this, Billy. The vaping ad hoc committee, if we can get an ordinance or a draft ordinance going soon on that, so we can bring that back.
Yeah, I believe that we were going to be reaching out, and I'll talk to Daisy tomorrow if she's reached out to the Public Health Department about having that version that had a twenty-one and over, the, if, if somebody had already drafted one of those, that makes it a lot easier for, um, uh, our city attorney to put that together, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
We only, we only had a, we had a complete non, but I don't think we actually had a twenty-one and over, uh, draft.
Oh, in the smoke shops?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. All right, from my update, just to add on to what Mr. Richmond was talking about, there is actually a, um, some studies being done to add an intersection at Balsa and twenty-five for Z best and some of the other truck traffic to, to come in and out of there safely. I travel it almost daily and I can tell you, they are not paying attention to their, their requirements for time. It's probably one of the reasons why it happened, and I see it almost on a daily basis, and they do know about it because we do, uh, report it to them. And it's a dangerous situation. As you approach that area, please slow down, be careful, know those trucks are gonna force their way onto the road. And again, I see it on a daily basis. As the rain starts, it gets worse, as the mud starts to build out in that area, so please be careful. I, uh, I picked up a second career now, I'm, I'm now a roadie for the high school band. And, um, I absolutely love it. It's my wife and I, it's our date night. She's, she's part of the kitchen crew for the, for the band. And I, every time I go to these, we, we just did one recently at the high school, their first concert there. Councilmember Spencer was there helping and it's just amazing. And people coming out of there complimenting the stadium and how great everything was, and I just did another one last weekend at Independence High in San Jose. And the talent of the young people is just really something to watch, and I, I know it might not seem like something fun to do, but believe me, it's great, and watching these bands from all over this area, just, I encourage you all, take the time and visit one of these events, it's well worth it. And volunteers are, are more than welcome because it does get kind of hard to lug some of these carts around and try to make it all happen, so I just want to congratulate the band for all their beautiful music. Yeah.
Working at the high school, I really don't get an opportunity to watch the band. I will admit, uh, last Saturday, um, when the mayor and I were there, the choreo, uh, choreography? The choreography um, was amazing. I, it was beautiful. They, they are impressive. Um, all the schools were very, very impressive, and I was very proud to be there.
Well, and I wanna add, I'm glad you brought this up. For our high school band, there was two people that handle it all. The, the music teacher and the choreographer that, that put it together. Now, when you go see some of the other high schools, they literally have semi-trucks pull into the events. Just beautiful stuff. They have fifteen, sixteen names, they name out of, people are involved in choreographing and the music selection and on and on and on, so the work our band does here is really incredible when you think about how little they have as far as resources, so please, help out. If you got some talent, come on. We, we can use your help out there, so thank you for mentioning.
My mother, my mother played the clarinet for San Benito High School. A long time ago.
We have some fun stuff.
Well, my mother was the drum major at.
Well, I'm the roadie, that's all I am. City manager.
I just wanted to let our, our folks that are on the Intergovernmental Committee to know that on Thursday, we're having our meeting, and it, the actual location has been changed over to the Board of Supervisors chambers. We have some things going on in this room. And then I wanted to just let Tina have, I know that some of you folks have talked a little bit about Treat Streets, but if she, she'd like to say a few words as well.
Good evening, Mayor Velazquez, City Council, Tina Garza, Recreation Supervisor. I too, when I was, when I was in high school, played in the band, and my greatest memory was playing in Downtown Disneyland, so yes, great memories. Um, created a long, long time ago, but I did too, and I enjoyed it. But I only did marching band, I didn't do the spring band, 'cause I was an athlete too. But what I wanted to do tonight is just give a quick report on our event, Treat Streets event. Great attendance, you guys, great community support we had. We had seventy businesses, vendors down there. We had, we passed out eight hundred bags. Fif, five hundred were from our local sponsors, you know, recreation put together, and then the San Benito County Free Library gave us three hundred bags and also put a book in each bag. So it was just really great support, and we got rid of those bags in around thirty minutes, so it was, it was pretty quick. I know the Key Club left, but they are great, great volunteers and supporters of all of our programs. From Treat Streets to our runs that we do, our five Ks, Red Ribbon, and our July Run, to Breakfast with Santa, and to all of our other ones that we do downtown, or events that we have. Um, I do wanna say thank you to our Hollister Police Department, did a great job down there, the interaction with the community, and just their presence was great. Our Fire Department, I know they left, but they did a great job. And of course, our Public Works Department, they were phenomenal down there and they helped us out a lot. Recreation, we have little resources and we all depend on everyone else to put on this great event. We did have seventy-two contestants for our costume contest. So it was a great turnout. A great representation.
There was a lot.
There, there were a lot of winners, and yeah, we were connecting with Benito Link and we'll get all the information. I didn't, I didn't write that information down. But I do want to let you know that Recreation Staff is working very hard on our ice rink that we will be doing. So our next event is our ice rink, Breakfast with Santa, and then our downtown tree lighting that we will do, we will work with the Hollister Downtown Association. So we're staying busy and I just wanted to put it out there to the public, just to say thank you to all our great supporters for this great event.
On the, on the ice rink? On the ice rink, can you set it up so we have a race between the City Council and supervisors?
A race?
On opening day?
Oh, I'm getting so many requests in there, Velazquez. I have rentals for birthday parties, I have ice skating. Oh, gosh, there's, there's been a lot.
If you do set it up for a race, I volunteer to hold the stopwatch.
You'll hold the stopwatch, perfect.
I do have a comment.
Well, I'm ready for it. Bring 'em on, bring 'em on.
You always come here, you always come here with this report. With these great reports. And you always thank everybody. And I wanna thank you. Because everybody tells me what a great job you do and how wonderful it is to work with you, and I want you to know it. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Tina, for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, did you want to say anything at all? No, you got nothing? Your last, come on.
No?
Your last meeting.
No, I, I was doing some dumb math earlier today, I was like, this is probably like my seven-hundred-and-fiftieth meeting that I've actually been here since I started. I've said the pledge like three thousand something times, so it's, it's been a long time.
And you couldn't just do twenty-four more for me, right?
No.
You haven't lost your mind yet, so.
Lot of planning commissions, a lot of park and recreation commissions, lot of youth committee.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no reports tonight.
Captain?
I just wanted, uh, there's a reason for the, the scruff. We're doing the no-shave November, December beard.
That's literally four days growth.
Actually started in October.
My husband's favorite month.
Yes. So I just want to let everyone know that we started in October with the Hollister Police Foundation donations for, uh, the officers are allowed to grow their, their facial hair and, and for donation to a charity. For October, we did the American Cancer Society of Breast Cancer. For November, the Hollister Police Officer Association is sponsoring the fundraiser. They're gonna be donating money to the American Cancer Society specifically designated for prostate cancer. And again, in December, we're gonna be doing, the, the donations are for Small Steps, raising money for coats and shoes in our local charity. So over the last four years, we've combined, did more than ten thousand dollars in donations, uh, in this way, challenging others to also donate. And the, the Hollister Police Officer Association matches the funds that the officers pay. So, it's really great that they do that, and that's the explanation for the scruff. You're gonna see the officers out there driving around unshaven, but they, they should have a bumper sticker saying, beards for charity, fundraiser in progress, so come January, it comes off, so, clean cut.
Thank you.
That's a long ways off. To thank the HPLA for me, please. They're very generous in their time and efforts.
Thank you very much. City Clerk?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, we're gonna move to item G three. I've asked I asked for these to be put on, yeah. So there's requests for the, uh, talked about the ballbouts in downtown and some of the plans that are, have been out there. Effort to really get moving on some of the issues in downtown, so I want to appoint a downtown revitalize, revitalization committee for that, so I'd like to ask Councilmember Lenore. She's passionate about those ballbouts in downtown, and Councilmember Sendez to be part of that committee and really get moving on. Get those plans back out, they've been out there since early two thousand, so.
Mr. Mayor, point order, please. We've been getting along so well, I'm sorry I'm gonna have to ruin it. Under, under state law, government title four, government cities, item four oh six oh five, and municipal code in the City of Hollister, I'm going to, uh, uh, ask to put in a motion to change that appointment to Ms. Councilman Lenore and myself. And I'm willing to even state why before I ask for a second. And the reason is, I believe that the people who do the revitalization downtown must be people who support the four hundred block. I do not believe it's reasonable as people who, who have been unalterably opposed the four hundred block, which is downtown, to be in the revitalization of that block. So I'm going to ask, make that motion. I'm, I move that the
Well, hang on, let me make
per state law, I move that we appoint Councilmember Lenore and myself to that, uh, committee. Do I have a second?
No, hang on, second, first. We're gonna go through it, and you're right, it's disappointing that we have to go through this again. As mayor, you know, I like to try to work with all of you to make things happen in a positive way. You might not agree with some of my views or my vision for it. But we've gone through this exercise once before of suspending rules to do something different. I don't think it's a good idea, it doesn't show teamwork, it shows, um, this effort to really fracture what we're trying to do. Now, the four hundred block has been decided, it's done. It has nothing to do with that. This is, working on plans are actually out there since two thousand and two. Because I know, I happen to be president of the HDA at the time, I know what those plans are, they've been out there for a long time. It's all a matter of implementing those plans, so I don't think this is appropriate. If you want to vote to suspend the rules again, obviously that is your, your option. I'm just telling you, I think that's be a disappointing choice.
If I can just make a statement.
Hang on, Councilmember Lenore?
Let me tell you, folks. Friday, I received a call from the mayor asking if I wanted to serve on the street repair ad hoc. I had just come back from vacation, hadn't looked at my packet yet, and I told him, you know, we do agree on street repair, it might be something I might be able to work with you on. He failed to mention that he was creating an ad hoc for downtown revitalization. But does that sound like somebody that wanted to work with me? No, not until I emailed him back and said, there's two committees, which one were you asking me to be on? Street repair, not downtown revitalization. Let me tell you why I should be on it, 'cause I'm gonna justify it right now. I believe in the mixed use that's called out in the general plan. I supported the four hundred block, I supported the downtown lighting. I will utilize five planners, engineers, HDA, COs, Chamber of Commerce, and the San Benito County Business Council to get that vision that we want for revitalization. It will not be done in somebody's restaurant in a back room where nobody knows about it. I'll have town halls. I'm open for suggestions. I'll have town halls, I'm open for suggestions. You know what, I want to make downtown the way you want it, the way you would like it. I don't know why people think I wouldn't, and I live down there. But he was dishonest when he asked me to be on the street repair. So I don't feel like he deserves to be on the downtown revitalization. Thank you.
Wait, just make sure we're clear, I did say I wanted you on.
The street repair.
No, hang on, we're talking about downtown revitalization first, and I asked that you be a member of that committee.
No, you didn't, you asked me if I wanted to be on the street repair.
No, hang on, we're, we're talking about downtown, there's two committees, two committees here.
Yeah, you failed to mention that.
Hang on, there's two committees here. First one, I asked of you to be on downtown revitalization with Councilmember Resendiz. Not myself right now, this is what my request is right now. Then we'll talk about the road one next.
You never said that, as God is my witness, you asked me if I wanted to be on the street repair with you.
I, that's a different conversation, Ms. Lenore.
Just tell the truth.
We're talking about first appointment, and then we'll do the next one.
But you're not telling the truth, you did not ask me to be on the downtown revitalization with Roland.
I'm asking you right now.
But that's not when you said Friday, you got caught.
Mr. Mayor.
No, no, no.
So you got caught, and you know it, and now you're backpedaling.
Councilmember, Councilmember Lenore.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'm done, I'm done.
Uh, yes, yet, there's a motion on the floor.
We have to suspend the rules.
I'm not suspending the rules, there's a motion on the floor.
To suspend the rules.
Do we get a second?
I second that.
Carol, hang on one second, I'd like to talk about it.
City Attorney? We're at this again.
We are at this again. Why, I don't know, but go ahead. Again, I mean, I think everybody's aware that I'm not a judge. And so I don't get to make the decision, I get to give legal advice. I can't give you legal advice in open session, that would violate attorney-client privilege. I can say that a procedure was followed last time. I'm not saying that's the only procedure, I'm not saying it's the only way, it's, it's one possible option to, to resolve this. Other than that, we're, we may be at a sticking point.
All right, let me provide some background knowledge here. I went on a trip to Long Beach, and I came back inspired by the little things that we can do, obtainable things that we can do, to really change the experience of downtown. I think that if we had things that I mentioned in my email to Carol Lenore about, such as outside seating, if we put outside seating, I think it's very affordable, and it would really change the experience of downtown. Wifi, we started a public art ad hoc committee. My idea and my request for putting this ad hoc on here, for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think I, I have the vision that downtown customers and residents of Hollister really need, or really... Basically, I wanted to do things that are obtainable, that are affordable. I wanted to start an ad hoc committee so that we can really start to change the experience. This is the, this is the commerce that we're living in now. People are not going to come downtown unless they can take a picture about it, unless they can tell people how much fun they had. I think that I'm the person, along with Carol Lenore, who's so passionate about downtown, to serve on this committee, for no other reason, other than to do some things that are obtainable for our community, to be able to go down there and to enjoy a nice night out, or a nice lunch out, to support our downtown business owners, and to, to support our, our community. I'm, I'm a little disappointed that it's turning so political. I think that we're totally overlooking and reading into what's going on here too much. But it doesn't surprise me, this has happened a number of times before. Carol Lenore, I'm asking you if you would support you and myself on the downtown ad hoc committee.
I have a problem, I, and I could show you the email that I responded, I was very excited to work with Councilmen Resendiz. But the fact is, is him and the mayor do their thing like this, and they consistently cut me out of the general plan.
Thank you.
Cut me out of the sign ordinance, they do their best to cut me out of downtown.
So we're making it personal, we're making it personal like always, and it doesn't surprise me. Good luck with your downtown revitalization ad hoc committee.
Excuse me, I never argue up here, but why is it personal? The fact is, is I wasn't selected for the general plan, I have thirty years, forty years in planning.
Again, it's personal. Let's get to the vote.
Okay.
I believe there's a motion on the floor.
They tried to pull it over my eyes, and I'm not inclined to cooperate right now.
This is not even that important to me, I thought I was going to do something good for the community.
You guys can run with it, good luck. Now, Mr. Richmond, if you want to suspend the rules to do this, you're free to make that motion. Oh, wait, Council, uh, City Clerk?
Could I make a suggestion? Perhaps someone could make a motion, if there's no second, that someone else makes a motion, rather than suspending rules?
Before we, before we talk about suspending rules, I, I have the floor. This is the state law, this is not something we made up. This is government code, Title IV, State of California, Government of Cities, item four oh six oh five, in general law cities where the office of mayor is an elective office, pursuant to Article Five, commencing in Section thirty-four nine hundred, Chapter Seven, which has been changed to Chapter Four, Part One, Division Two. Title IV, the mayor with the approval with the city council can make appointments to the boards, number one. So that is state law. Then there is.
Get to the vote.
Hang on.
Mr. Mayor, I object. There is also the municipal code of the, of the city of Hollister, which is the law of the city of Hollister. The municipal code of the city is the law of the city, we don't make it up as we go along, okay? It allows exactly the same thing, okay? To, to make the motion to, to appoint the members of the committees. Our history is, the mayor has used the committees politically. And I'm going to talk about one right now. The majority of this council indicated it wanted an ad hoc committee for term limits. The mayor appointed himself and Councilmember Resendiz as the two members of that committee.
Okay, we're, we're speaking.
Excuse me, I have the floor, sir. I have the floor, sir.
You're going to other conversations, the agenda.
Please do not, we're talking about your use of the committees. You object to my use of committees, do not interrupt.
Mr. Richmond, we're talking about two items.
Sir, I have the floor, if you want to rule me out of order, I will rule that you, we overrule you.
Okay, please, you are out of order.
Okay, I move, I move in accordance with this municipal code that we overrule the mayor's out of order. Do I get a second?
Second.
Please call for a vote, sir. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You are overruled.
Okay.
Thank you. The mayor appointed himself and Mr. Resendiz as the two members to be on that committee. That committee has never reported that it met ever once. Ever. Because they don't want to do it. And that's why I'm asking for who should be on the committee, because the mayor has used it politically to get what he wants when he doesn't have a majority. The majority of the city council rules. The mayor gets to sit here and use the gavel, and the mayor gets to, to, to conduct the meetings. But according to the election of our mayor, he's supposed to support the majority rule of the city council. He's not supposed to support his own ideas once the vote is taken. That's called dictatorship. And we're not going to have that here, not as long as I'm on the city council. So, no, I'm not done.
Councilmember Resendiz, please, go ahead.
Therefore, I move that we appoint for downtown revitalization myself and Councilmember Lenore. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
No, hang on, hang on a second, I'll, I'll be calling for the vote. City Attorney, we went through this before, so last time we, to solve this, they suspended the rules. So I would ask, if you want to do this, please call for a vote to suspend the rules first, so you can do what you.
There's no reason to suspend the rules, the municipal code.
We went through this before, so please.
There is no reason, sir.
There is, sir, there is.
No, there is not.
That's how we handled last time, you'd have to suspend the rules.
The best I can say is that if, if we follow that procedure and the rules are suspended, at least then there would be certainty, I think, among all five councilmembers as to what did or did not happen.
This is what we did last.
Okay, well, before I do that, I'm going to read this. Hollister Municipal Code two point oh four, point oh three oh, that is the law of the city of Hollister. All special committees of the city council shall be appointed by the presiding officer unless otherwise directed by the city council. I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules, if that makes you happy.
The motion is to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries three, two.
I'm against.
And now I'll make a motion, now we suspend the rules, I'll make a motion that, that the downtown revitalization be, be, committee be myself and, and Councilmember Lenore.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, aye. All right, now, Ms. Lenore, going back to the other one, so we're clear, I'd ask you personally if you'd be interested in serving on the road committee, because so many streets in the downtown area. That's what I had called, I talked to you about, not the other one.
Correct.
So I'd like to appoint yourself, you and myself for the roads, as I requested.
I'll decline that, thank you.
Okay, you'll decline that, okay, all right.
Could I ask a quick question, clarification, that was four one zero zero, that last one, for Marty and Carol to be on? It was three two? Okay. I think it was four, four one. Yeah.
Oh, you voted for it, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so four one, so now we'll go back through this. You sure, Ms. Lenore?
Yes, I recommend Honor. I would be pleased to work with you.
Excellent, good. See how easy that was? All right, so I'd like to have Honor work on the committee with me. Okay? Is there a consensus on that?
I'll second that, whatever.
Is there a consensus on, yes, okay.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, good, we're making progress. Let's go to item G four.
Hello, hello, Mayor and Council. So I was asked to bring this forward by Vice Mayor Richmond to discuss if we can do loans between funds. You can, there are two different types of loans. There's the due-to, due-from, which is paid within a year, it's usually, is more of an accounting rule that we use at the end of the year for financial statements, or like if we have grants where they reimburse us after we make the expenditures, the cash hasn't come in at the year end, and we use that quite often. The other one is it advances between the funds, and then that's usually more than one year. And you should, would have council approval and a stated interest rates, usually most people use like the late rate as the mechanism. So the, the idea was by Councilmember Richmond was to do a loan between funds and to be, so we could start the work on streets, and before the Measure G money came in from COG. So it's up to the council. There are two funds that we can borrow from, the traffic impact fee or this sewer expansion. The traffic impact fee has over nineteen million dollars, and the sewer expansion has four, over fourteen million dollars that we could borrow from. But you probably don't want to do more, that much, you probably want to do whatever the annual amount that we get from COG, or less. So it's up, we're just asking for direction, if that's something you want us to bring forward.
I think I'd like to comment.
Well, the reason we're doing it is because we promised, we promised the, we promised the taxpayers that we would start working on the roads as soon as possible.
So let me, are you, go ahead.
Yeah, so we promised them that, the problem is that even though they're collecting money for the tax, it takes a long time for the administrative portion to put the money together and get it transferred. So we can sit here for a year and wait for the money, and not do a thing on the roads, even though the money is fully guaranteed that we're going to get it, because it's, it's tax, it's a tax bond. It will eventually be a bond, but right now it's a tax. The plan, when I joined COG, they told me the plan was to spend on local roads for the first five years. So we know that's where the money's going to go. The other reason is money is really cheap right now. So the money we've got sitting there, what'd you say, is about thirty-three million dollars, thirty-two million dollars? So we got thirty-two million dollars sitting there, and it's only earning about two-point-seven percent. Money is really cheap. And the problem is, the, the rate that the, it costs to fix the roads is going up much faster than that. So if we wait around, so let's say we borrow a year's worth, that's about a million and a half dollars in advance, so we can get started. Because we only started collecting the money in April, and we get started on the roads. If we borrowed it for a year, it would cost us about forty thousand dollars in interest, between forty and forty-five thousand dollars in interest. We're only going to borrow about a million and a half. If the money comes in early, it'll cost us less in interest, but at least we'll get going. We'll save, we'll save you guys that much entire repair, and repair of your suspension systems on your car. Because you know what those potholes are doing to your cars, okay? And so we'll save you that much money easily, and the cost of, the cost of fixing everything is going up faster than the cost of, of borrowing money. So this is, this is the right thing to do, it's a short-term loan, I'd like to take it for somewhere between a year, one, twelve, and fourteen months. I only want to take one year's worth, about one-point-five million dollars. I want to start paying it back as soon as the money starts coming in, I don't want to hoard the money. So I want to minimize the amount of interest, but I want to get that six-month head start on road repair because, because our people paid the tax, and they deserve to have the roads fixed. We promised them that, thank you.
Okay, well, let me point out a couple of things here. The dollars that will be coming in from Measure G will be here, or we can access those dollars sooner than that time. The season for the road construction is not till, till next year, especially when we're doing heavy work. The dollars will be there, there's no need to pull or borrow from another fund. I'm always careful and concerned when we borrow from one fund to another. If we had no choice, we could do that. Not to mention, as I mentioned before, we should be moving VLF funds over to the road repair. So that's an additional three million dollars, two to three million dollars. So really what we have, the potential for this year is close to five million dollars if we wanted to use it for road repair. About three million from Measure G, and another two to two and a half million from VLF if we chose to go that direction, which I think we need to commit to, so we can keep spending those dollars for the next several years to catch up completely. I don't think there's a reason to mix monies from different funds, I think it's, it's a recipe for disaster. If we had no choice, I would probably agree with you, but I think at this point, we do have a choice, and we have the time. As Councilmember Spencer and I will be working on some of these road reports and figuring out how or what roads to really be focused on. Even five million dollars, four million dollars a year is quite a bit of work to, to do in, in that time period. So the, the funding will be there without having to do a loan, is what I'm saying. And if not, then I would agree with you, but at this point, it looks like the funding will be there to, to make that happen. Okay, any other questions or comments, Councilmember Resendiz?
Yeah, Brett, it says normally this type of loan is used for cash flow purposes at fiscal year end. Can you just explain that a little bit more, and then just tell me what your personal opinion is? You're, you're the, you're the finance guy, let me know what you would do, or what you think is feasible to do moving forward.
So there's two, two types of loans, a due-to, due-from, that's for cash flow purposes. Where in advance is like more than a year, so as Councilmember Richmond is suggesting, is advancing for, say, fourteen months, then we should have an agreement by council and a stated interest rate. I think with the Measure G money coming in, we probably can, by the time we put in our claims, we can get the money back from, from COG. They've been very, very good partner when we requested funds. It would be nice to maybe have council's approval, just in case that money, for some reason there was a hiccup that we had, have that cash flow. But we, like I said, they've been very good partners, and I don't see why they wouldn't. If we got the invoices to them timely, that we wouldn't get the money back timely from them.
Yeah, and I've had this conversation at COG, or with the director, to make sure we could do this, and yes, the dollars would be there. And against, I think more importantly for us is to make a commitment. And again, so I think more importantly for us is to make a commitment to be using VLF funds for road repairs. So, we start getting committed to those dollars, so we have them accessible every year, and a commitment to improve our roads. And I, I think we're there, and I think maybe the first conversation is verifying with COG for the dollar amount and the timeline. And then we can go from there before we start discussing taking loans.
Well, I just want you to know, my concern is, I talked to COG. I said, "Where are we on this?" And they said, "Well, the ball's in our court. We're working on it." It's taken COG a long time administratively because they don't have all the controls within their grasp. On some items, they have to go to Caltrans and other places and get permission. For instance, we got five million dollars, I think, uh, for becoming a self-service, right, county. Well, that was nice, except they didn't do a lot of talking about the fact that to spend that five million dollars, we have to come up with five million dollars of our own as matching funds, okay? So, it, so, most of the people who heard the story, you're gonna get five million dollars if you pass the tax. They think, "Oh, you get five billion dollars, you can start using it on the roads." Truth of the matter is, you gotta come up with five million bucks of your own. And then you have to go to Caltrans or some other agency and say, "Here's what we intend to do with the money." And you have to wait while they process all that through and decide, "Yeah, that's okay. That suits our thing," and then they give you the okay, and now you're sitting here eighteen months later, and you haven't fixed anything. I have, I don't want to borrow any money we don't need, believe me. As far as the VLF money, that's not on the agenda. That's a completely different, uh, discussion because that money would have to come out of the general fund, which is a completely different fund. It has nothing to do with borrowing money. The VLF money would be transferred, and, and, and someone would have to tell me, "If you take that money out, how many police officers are you gonna fire? How many firemen are you gonna lay off? How many, whatever you're gonna do." So, we should not mix apples and oranges, I agree. And so, the apples should be, you should put it on the agenda if that's where you want it. Anybody wants it, put it on the agenda. We'll discuss it. I'll discuss anything. I'm not afraid of anything. But I'm just telling you, we need to be ready because I don't want to be sitting here and have COG say, "Well, we're in another three-month hiccup" like they were last time, and the roads don't get done again. It takes a long lead time to do the roads. You don't pick up the telephone and tell somebody, "I want to do the roads tomorrow." You have to get it scheduled. You have to get it planned. You have to do all that stuff in advance. And if you know you have the money available, you can move on. If you don't have the money available, nothing happens. That's the way it works. Thank you.
Okay, let me, just a quick clarification before I get to you, Mister Resendez. The other dollars you're talking about with Caltrans, that's a different pot of money. Measure G is a different pot of money. It was always made clear for the other five million dollars that there'd have to be matching countywide or whatever way we chose to do it. That's a whole different fund. Measure G dollars, totally separate, has nothing to do with Caltrans. It's available. We just have to decide how much, that split is gonna happen already. We're gonna use those dollars, figure out how much we want to use, the, how much do we have in the budget for VLF? Well, we have an additional three million dollars a year at this point surplus. So, we need to make sure, go through the, the dollars and talk about how we're using for the roads. Because we had been planning for this for quite a while to start fixing our roads. It's not new. It's a conversation we've been having. So, again, I, I think we could do this, first verifying those dollar amounts. Our commitment to what we want to spend each year on this. I have asked for the VLF conversation to be had, and we did briefly talk about it.
Correct.
So, we can, I'd be happy to have that conversation again, that commitment, so people know our roads are gonna be fixed. So, want to agendize, agendize that? That's, that's fine with me. But the dollars are, at this point, we should have the dollars without having to do a, a loan transfer. Let's verify that first. Councilmember Resendez?
Yeah, I guess I just have more questions. I mean, I, I'm not so opposed to this, to be honest. But I'm just think, wondering if we're putting the cart before the horse. We, what, do we have the roads identified as to which ones, like, is this money gonna be earmarked? And to which roads are they? Or is this all going to Highway 25? What are we talking about here?
So, Bill can talk about it, I can briefly talk about it. We had a road study done.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, we have, so we have a pavement management index. That's a report that has graded, um, our roads. I think we're in the process of updating that, so, um, that report was done about two, two and a half years ago. Things have changed and, and, and roads have been added. I think what the council, a couple of things the council should really consider when they're starting, starting to talk about roads is, I think the mayor touched on it just for a hot second, is that if you want to spend five million dollars on roads as a policy, I think that's a really good policy for the council to set, and then you let us figure out how to get you your five million dollars. Um, and where it's, and where the best place it is to come from. And then, at the same time as that, we have that conversation, we start talking about the individual streets and or roads that you want to address. And breaking it up between doing, say, a complete road rehabilitation or reconstruction versus doing chip seals and slurry seals. Because there's a lot of methods that you can use on a lot of our better roads to make sure that they last for a longer period of time. I don't know if you remember the conversation about, it's basically like putting suntan lotion on a street, right? Um, it's a pretty cheap and inexpensive, it, I, I like the idea about coming out of the gate with a large project like that because what you would really be showing is that you'd be showing most of this community that you have brand-new black streets, right? And it's showing that you want to maintain them. If, if, if the council desires to do a lot of reconstructions, that money doesn't go quite as far, right? So, you're gonna hit two or three streets. You're gonna be spending a fortune on them. Um, and I think a good combination of that is, of, is absolutely necessary. I think you want to hit your seventy and above streets to do some, some chip seals. And I think you pick of, a few key streets that are not already identified in our SB 1 money program and, and work on those as well. And I think that we can get you there. I think one of the things that staff struggles with a little bit is, is the priority of, of streets. And, and I'll just be, let me just be frank, as long as we're talking about the streets. In the last six months or so, we've tried to do Fourth Street. We've talked about Lad Street. We've talked about Memorial, and we've talked about Buena Vista. And one of the things I want you be, all to be cognizant of is that, yes, those are five very, very important streets, but they're also five very, very expensive streets. And I think we, for instance, like Fourth Street, one of the, um, one of the situations that I think that I run into is that basically plans are done for Fourth Street. Um, we just need the council to commit to finishing Fourth Street. Um, I know that there's some desire to, to work on, on Buena Vista, I think with the county. And I think that's an awesome project that we can work collaboratively with them because they have the north side of the street. We have the south side of the street. And then we, we, but we need to get your priority on what it is that you think is the most important. Get your dollar amount, and then let us put together the program.
Bill, maybe you can, we're talking about this, explain the extension of life of a road when you do the slurry.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, what you're doing is you're taking a street, um, the, the streets that are, tracks that were done in the late nineties are, are a perfect example right now. They're about twenty years old. They have not normally been maintained. If you put a relatively inexpensive slurry seal on that road, you'll get another twenty years out of that road for very, very minimal amount of money. Um, so, you're talking about like projects, uh, all of Anderson Homes probably needs to be done, or Sunny Slope Villages. All of the, all of the vintage estates, you know, that was all, all done around the same time. Portions of the Valley View Estates area, the same. Um, and, and you can make a huge impact on the roads and the, and the visual component of our roads and save those roads from declining anymore, um, just by waiting a few years. So, that's why those are important. I know it's hard for people to understand, you know, Fifth Street in front of the library is horrible, but it doesn't get any worse than horrible, right? So, whether you do that road today, or you do that road next year, or two years down the line, it's not gonna make a whole lot of difference. But if you take that money and spread it over a larger area, you can save a lot more streets.
Thank you, Bill, for helping with that.
I'd like to add, that's accurate. I'd like to add that, um, there is actually a, a mathematical formula that is used based on the street rating to do this, so it's not a guesswork, okay? That tells you which ones are worth fixing.
Okay. Councilmember Resendez?
I do recall that from a previous city council meeting, so thanks for clarifying that. I guess I do feel a little bit uncomfortable about borrowing money. Anytime we borrow money, we're never like guaranteed the money. It doesn't seem like that's fiscally responsible or sound to do. Um, there was an ad hoc committee that was, um, formed tonight, that they're, they're focused on the roads. I would probably feel more comfortable for them to go back and to look at how we are gonna finance it and to what projects we're gonna earmark, um, the money to, and then for them to bring it back to the city council. So, uh, I just think that we're, we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. Let's, for sure, figure out which streets need to be done, which ones we're gonna get done, and then how we're gonna finance that after the fact. And I feel more comfortable doing that in an ad hoc committee, so I'm probably not gonna support this, but it probably doesn't matter. Thanks.
I would have no problem with that. This is not a resolution. This is just a, uh, an idea.
Have for questions, Miss Lenore?
So, we'll be discussing identification of roads because I gotta tell you, San Bernardino, South of South Street, I'm not gonna give in. I want my street done. We get nothing south of South Street. You haven't done it. I want it done, and I'm gonna scream if it doesn't get done.
I forgot to add your street to the list. I apologize.
Because everybody forgets San Bernardino Street, and I'm tired of it.
Oh, wait, you're not on the road committee. Just kidding. We know. These are conversations we've had for a while.
It's your fault.
Better get on the list.
Councilmember, I agree with you. Councilmember Spencer?
Engineering better be hearing me.
And, and, and since engineering isn't here, and, or I don't know if Brian's out there, one of the other things, um, I think we should always be conscious of is this. Um, when we do road work, I, um, the mayor has probably the most experience in this, is, is this. Um, we go in with heavy equipment. We do some grinding, and inevitably, other things break, right?
We have it anyway.
Right. And so, one of the things that I also want you folks to be conscious of is this, is that if we're breaking old roads, we don't have a lot of money to fix what's underneath there, for instance, water and sewer lines. Our water impact fees, Brett will tell you, has gone down tremendously over the last couple of years because of various projects. Um, so, that's one of the things that, that I want you always to be aware of, is that when we're doing those older streets, re, remember that it's like a rehabbing an old house. You never know what you're gonna find when you, when you start ripping things up. And just like your street...
Sound like my husband. I don't like it there, and I don't like it here because is it never gonna get done? Because we're gonna use that excuse for it?
No, 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 no. I just, I want you to, I don't want, I want you to, it's okay if you do small sections of those at a time. I don't want, you shouldn't be looking at large projects like that.
I get jealous because we never get anything.
Councilmember Lenore, thank you.
Now, I sound like your husband.
It's, it's easy to say, "Just fix the streets." It's more complicated, much, much more costly. And as Bill pointed out, if you don't do it right, you're gonna find yourself spending a lot more money down the road. And he's absolutely right. You start tearing up a street that has an old infrastructure in there that's planning to be replaced in five years, ten years, you just might cost yourself a few million dollars extra by making the simple mistake.
Toral Parkins.
We, we know this from our study. It's very clear. It's gonna be a lot of work, a lot of, um, studying to go through it again. But I think Councilmember Resendez had a good idea. The ad hoc can meet. We can talk about it, go through it with, uh, Danny and whoever else, and start looking at these streets and a plan. Make sure we're not gonna affect the streets that we're gonna be fixing the infrastructure on in five to ten years, so.
If we have a consensus on that, I'd like to move in that direction, but let's just get it done. Let's meet. Let's get it done. Let's get moving on it, guys. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Let's meet tomorrow.
Is there a consensus on it?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. All right.
So, the consensus is too?
We're gonna wait for the ad hoc to, uh, work together on it, review the, the plan, the road plan. And then we're gonna come back, make a report, how much money we probably should be using per year to keep it going.
Thank you.
Is that about right?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. All right, see, we, we do agree on a few things here and there. HIJK, there's no business. L, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting in honor of William B. Ezra, and good luck, buddy.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.